Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
That's everyone except for Alderman, our Wesley is here. Make a motion to approve the October 10th, 2019 Planning, Zoning and Building Committee.
A move.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, report on recommendation. Oh, our mayor does have something, information to provide to the residents, so.
Real quick, Metra Safety Contest, 14th Annual. On behalf of Metra, I'd like to thank for your ongoing support of our public safety efforts. The Metra Safety Poster and Essay Contest is key initiative in our campaign to increase our children's awareness and understanding of how to stay safe near trains and railroad tracks that crisscross northeastern Illinois. Thank you. So currently soliciting entries for the Metra's 2019-2020 Safety Poster and Essay Contest. This year's theme is Obey the Signs. The deadline for entries is Friday, January 31st, 2020. And we'll have a copy of the posters on the website. Grant will do that tomorrow, probably. This is for students K through 12. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we go to the report on recommendation, just welcome to the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee of the City Council. We do have a large crowd here this evening. I assume everybody is here with connection to the zoning approval sought for the Bryn Mawr redevelopment. In order to prevent the meeting from being disrupted, and according to the city's public comment rules, any individual desiring to address the comment committee is required to complete a public comment card. They're green cards. If you need one, somebody could get you one, or they're over on the side. I have some of them here. Since you are all here on the same matter, I assume you have the same concerns. I suggest that you designate a spokesperson to make comments on behalf of the group. This would give our committee an opportunity to hear all of the concerns, and it will avoid repetition or duplication of comments, identical or similar comments. Anyone seeking to address the committee after completing the public comment card must first be recognized by the chair, which is myself, prior to making any public comment. You'll be required to give your name, and if you wish, you can provide your address. Once public comment is concluded, the committee will proceed to the items on its agenda. Please note that public comment is an opportunity to share your concerns. This is not intended to be a back and forth with the committee. Please be respectful of others talking, and we do limit the time to three minutes. Anyone disrupting the meeting will be removed from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. So I will start with some of the green cards I have here. Will Fairchild? Go up to the podium.
Give me your card. Give him the card. Give it back to him.
Will Fairchild, since they say he's not going to move, I wasn't expecting him to speak first, but I will say that all of the residents in the Mohawk Manor area are very concerned about the new development, their standpoint of becoming a good, honorable neighbor with us during the transition period where they are.
Your mic's on. It's all right. Can you hear, can you hear me now? Mohawk Manor residents are very concerned about the pending redevelopment of the property that's going to be known as 800 North Route 83. And many of the concerns have to do with being a good neighbor to the existing residents. The biggest circumstance that we, as residents, are concerned about is traffic, especially on the existing streets that are not designed for commercial traffic. They weren't built that way. We have no sidewalks. We have many people that walk dogs, walk for health, have children playing, ride bikes, and they're very concerned about how the traffic will be handled, not only during the construction, but afterward. My strongest concern to you is treating the Bryn Mawr Avenue as a standing construction zone where they'll just stand until they're called to bring in materials or whatever, that there would be using Bryn Mawr or Pine Avenue for construction vehicles at any time, which we've been led to believe won't occur, and I'm hoping that that's the case. The other concerns basically are having to do with air quality during demolition, water quality that's existing right now because of situations that developed from the arborists that came in and handled things in a way that many of the residents feel was very irresponsible. There was no prior warning that they were going to swoop in and in a two-day period, tear down hundreds of trees, and just so that some of the residents could make sure that their children were staying away from that area as a play area. It was very irresponsible, and there was no one from the developer that was on-site to our knowledge. Many people were very upset by that. I'm hoping that if this planned rezoning and property development is approved, that the City of Wooddale will take all appropriate steps towards safety and security and traffic management, and we appreciate your comments.
Okay, next, Tom Milowski.
Hello? Can you hear me? Good. You are annexing part of our neighborhood.
Okay. Please state your name.
Okay, Tom Milewski, resident of the neighborhood. I live on Washington Street. You're changing our neighborhood, and you are causing the degradation of a quality of life, because we have a neighborhood that's fenced off from all the industrial-zoned areas, and we have separate streets. There is no mixing of commercial or industrial traffic with our residential traffic. And if there was any fairness to this process, that would stay the same. You would put a fence that's on the north edge of the area that exists right now between residential zoning and industrial zoning on the north, and move it to the south edge of this property, keeping things similar, maybe not the same, but similar. The traffics should not mix. Commercial-industrial traffic should still go in the areas that are zoned for it, and residential areas should have the peace and quiet that we enjoy right now. Our neighborhood is extremely safe, because the traffic is minimal. Only residents and their guests basically use our streets, and we are very used to it, and it's probably the best part of the neighborhood. So, you know, it would be nicest if you put that fence and separate us totally from the new development. If you can't do that, you can do partial things like making sure that there is no construction traffic through Pine Street. Pine Street is the street that connects all our streets in our neighborhood, and it's only through way through our neighborhood. All the other streets are no true traffic, because they, they start and end in our neighborhood. So the only true traffic is through Pine Street and Bryn Mawr, and a couple other pieces on the south. But that's, that's the main concern. The streets do not have sidewalks. We have a lot of animals, a lot of kids. Safety is, is the issue. So our biggest request would be to do measures to separate the traffic and keep the nature of our neighborhood as it is right now. Since, you know, strange political situation, we are an incorporated area, but it seems like it should be that we are not people without rights, and you shouldn't be able to come into our neighborhood and do whatever you want. I understand they bought 30 parcels, and those 30 parcels become one, and you have perfect right to annex it, but you should not change our neighborhood with it. So that's my piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tammy Bending.
Tammy Bending, 6 N 775 Pine Street.
Could you talk in the microphone, please?
Tammy Bending, 6 N 775 Pine Street. So some of our concerns are, the other night, the traffic study was repeatedly referred to. So I stopped in and I took a look at that. Well, the first thing that I noticed is that it was a software program that took the statistics. So if you're an actual human out there, you would actually see what's going on. Yesterday morning, at 7:30 in the morning, pulling out of Bryn Mawr, making a left onto 83 was five minutes. That's not the light traffic that the traffic study says. We currently only have one access from Edgewood to Foster. Why are there three entrances that are going to be turning into the building on Bryn Mawr? That seems excessive. That's because you're bringing 250 cars into a neighborhood, and we've only, are eliminating approximately 60 cars. Those, that math doesn't equal out to the same. No, don't roll your eyes. It's the truth. If it were affecting you this way, you would say the same thing. We have a school bus on the corner that'll, that'll be affected. As you turn into our neighborhood from 83, the shoulder has been removed with the 390 traffic. You can be run over by any car at any given time of the day, not even when it's excessive traffic. We have semis and cars that are coming out of that industrial section on the, what side of? The east side of 83, because they can only come out through that one section there by the gas station. So they come and they make U-turns. That shouldn't be happening. They stop all traffic. They don't care. And as you pull into our neighborhood, right there on 83, there is a no-truck sign. And that really seems like what you're going to be doing is bringing a lot of trucks down our Bryn Mawr Avenue. Let's see. The other thing I'm going to say is never once have any of us really been given any consideration by any of you. We never received any mailer, anything, telling us what's going on with all this. Everything that we have gone through has been from my word of mouth to theirs, to theirs, to theirs. So people are enraged over this because of that. Nobody's come through. We were at the planning meeting the other night. Everybody sits there and says, you know, you guys all have your blank faces. This affects me. My house is right on the corner there. The police. Are we going to have extra police patrol in our neighborhood? Right now, we're covered by the county. We had an incident a couple years ago. We needed to call the police to come and pick a child up that was wandering the neighborhood. Took 35 minutes for them to get there, to get an infant. That shouldn't have happened. I called Wooddale. We need better support than that. We're going to have people that are going to be let off at the pseudo-Pace Bus Stop on the corner of our street, that the people stand in the grass, sit on milk crates. The Pace Bus Stop's there. Blocks are turning into our subdivision, so we have to plan around that as well. So there are several things that need to be taken into consideration for safety, for our concern. At times, I probably won't even be able to get out of my driveway with the way that the three entrances are laid out. I'm fortunate I have a half-circle. I can get out on the other side. My other neighbors don't have that option. As cars are coming in, he stated that it was, that people will be in and out of the neighborhood all day long. How do I know when I'll be able to get in and out? Do I now have to plan extra time to get to work? Because I won't be working right across the street from my house. You know, this is what you're telling us, that this is an option, that, you know, we're bringing all these jobs to the neighborhood, and that's, none of us really care about that. We want our houses. And I'll leave it with that. I'll let it go on to someone else.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Christine Bending.
Good evening. Christine Bending, I live at 17 West 027 Bryn Mawr Avenue. We are here tonight to learn more about the details regarding the annexation of the 30 properties north of Bryn Mawr Avenue in Mohawk Manor, and to bring to the attention of the Wooddale City Council the many concerns already voiced regarding the events and occurrences that have transpired since the middle of September. I'm going to preface, I do run out of breath. I have lung disease, so just bear with me. And those that will be happening in the months to come, should the council ultimately decide to annex those properties and the construction plans proposed for the site. I took the time to review the documents Transwestern included in their application for annexation. One of the documents was a traffic impact study for the, quote, "proposed warehouse development in Wooddale, Illinois, prepared by KLOA with data collected in July 2019 and from other sources." A few items piqued my interest, as they were not included in Transwestern's presentation on October 21st. KLOA did this survey using a proposed site and development plan that included a right-in, right-out access drive on Route 83 located 300 feet north of Bryn Mawr Avenue. The plans submitted by Transwestern with their application does not show this access. The third access to the site from Bryn Mawr near Pine Street is not represented on the plans given to KLOA, but is on the plans submitted to Wooddale. Also mentioned, and I quote, "As part of the redevelopment plan, it is important to note that Bryn Mawr Avenue will be extended west to Edgewood Avenue. This connection will improve access to the site, especially increasing site access for truck traffic, as well as providing area traffic with additional access to Illinois 83, not presented by Transwestern on October 21st." Two communications between the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and KLOA are attached. I have those, if you would like to see them. One of which seems to indicate, CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, does not support the proposed development. These items indicate to me that Transwestern is less than truthful when presenting facts. How can they be trusted? The traffic impact study results also cannot be used, as the findings are based on incorrect data supplied to KLOA by Transwestern. Transwestern replied to many questions with a non-showant, "We will do our best to mitigate your concerns. We want to be a good neighbor." Well, I know Mr. Rogers was rolling over in his grave every time that phrase was spoken. I have yet to witness any good neighbor behavior from Transwestern representatives. Another neighborly act occurred the first week of October. A company was hired by someone to begin removing trees and other vegetation from the properties recently acquired by Transwestern. Upon calling Addison Township and the DuPage County Highway Department, I learned that no permits had been issued for tree removal, nor any special-use permits for oversized vehicles to be on the residential streets in Mohawk Manor. I have a picture of an oversized load vehicle in our subdivision. I feel this is just the beginning of the disrespect for us and the law that we can expect from Transwestern and the contractors they hire. Finally, I want to express my disappointment with the actions of the Wooddale City Council and all other persons responsible for the total lack of communication with the residents of Mohawk Manor. I am tired of hearing that we are not residents, I'm going to get emotional, of Wooddale, which I interpret as you are not important. We pay taxes to the Wooddale schools, the Wooddale library, the Wooddale Park District, and the Wooddale Fire Protection District. Our children attend the Wooddale schools. We shop in Wooddale. We eat at Wooddale restaurants. We attend religious services in Wooddale. We attend Wooddale community events. We are Wooddale. I urge the Wooddale City Council members to revisit your intent to annex those 30 parcels with the current development plans. Think about what the remaining residents of Mohawk Manor will have to endure during and after construction. Would you want your neighbor subjected to that? But remember, Transwestern professes to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Jason DiBello.
Good evening. Jason DiBello, I live on Washington Street in the Mohawk Manor subdivision. I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but traffic is a huge, huge issue. Spill-off traffic is a huge issue. I don't know if anybody sitting on the board has ever even been in our subdivision during any type of rush hour. You would see that, exactly what she was saying about the traffic, it's ridiculous to think that there would be low-impact traffic. All that traffic is going to spill in other means, and right now, the other means is south down Pine to Foster Avenue. It's a lot of vehicles in our neighborhood. Those roads aren't even designed for that. Secondary, my concern is the water. We are on well and septic. I don't know if any of you are aware that even when Route 83 was made into the highway that it is today, before, when it was a smaller two-lane highway, there were no issues. When they changed it to what it is today, it changed the water table in our subdivision. A lot of the wells had to be drilled an additional 100 feet deep. I know that your annexation is most likely going to go through. This is something that everyone in Wooddale wants, but you definitely will be on the hook for that when that building goes in and there's a problem with our water. So it's something that I think you should certainly consider, along with the septic field and whatnot, and how they're going to take care of removing the septic field so it doesn't leach into our water system. So I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Julia Malik.
Hi, my name is Julia Malik. I live at 17W 048 Center Street in Mohawk Manor. I don't need to reiterate what everybody said. Chris, they've all said pretty much what we all feel here. I do want to address the issue of the driveways, though. To me, that is a big part of keeping our community together until, and I do believe they will eventually, buy all the houses. You know, progress always goes forward. But if you could keep them out of our neighborhood until they do buy the other side of the block, or they do buy more of the houses, it would be good for our safety, our, our kids. We have a, the buses come in one way and go out the other way. There's nowhere for them to turn around. They have to go through. And if there's trucks on that street, what's going to happen? That's a dangerous situation. I don't understand why that other access they want to put at the southwest end of Bryn Mawr can't be moved over 300 feet onto their property and have that be the access for them. I know that Wooddale, in the grand scheme of things, wants to open up Bryn Mawr and connect to Wooddale eventually, all the way through to 83. But can't you do that after they bought the rest of the houses? You're not going to do that tomorrow or in a year, are you? Well, maybe you are. Is that a no?
Again, at the hearing, you'll, we'll be able to talk, but here, we're just listening.
Okay. Well, we'd like you to delay opening up that road for their truck traffic, and you know there's going to be cut-through traffic, because the traffic around us is horrendous on 83, going through the subdivision, and even getting out onto Foster Avenue. You're going to have an issue. But if you can keep those trucks on your industrial drives, we'd appreciate it. And I really hope you consider that.
Okay, thank you. Next, Debbie Palumbo.
My name is Debbie Palumbo, and I live on Center Street in Bensonville, and I won't, I'll try not to repeat all that. I walk my dog, though, through the neighborhood, and I used to wait with my kids at the bus stop. And many times, when 83 gets backed up, people will come through our subdivision, speeding through, thinking that they can get around and get somewhere else. Sometimes it's icy, snowy, and you know, kids aren't always paying attention at the bus stop. It's a dangerous situation, and that wasn't that many cars. But with all these cars out of the three exits that they were planning to put in there, it's just going to be ridiculous. And you know when they can't get out, they're going to come through, because that's probably going to be the shortest route and bring so much extra traffic. One thing that they did say was they are going to bring in, they're going to have 200 jobs, bring in 200 jobs, or there would be 200 jobs. 100 of those people, and he did say, are going to be Transwestern people that were coming from somewhere else to here. And the other jobs, I don't know if they're all going to be new, or if it's going to be some of the people from the place that's coming here. And as far as Wooddale's concerned, will they have a Wooddale fair so that Wooddale residents have the opportunity to maybe get some of these jobs before other people from the city and be bussed in? I mean, those are also concerns for us. When we walked through town and we got signatures for a petition, we had 104 signatures, and that was not even the whole neighborhood, because we couldn't get to everybody. And because our neighborhood is so nice, they would talk to us 10 or 15 minutes each door we went to. So it took us a really long time to get to the people. They were all in favor of the same thing and all very concerned. Some people do not want to move, ever. Some will move for a certain price. But the point is, while we are still here, we want the quality of our homes, which is why we moved here, and this community, and the safety for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Frances DeJesus.
My name is Frances DeJesus. I'm on 17W 063 Bryn Mawr Avenue, right across the street where the development is going to happen. I have a six-year-old daughter that, to this day, I don't take her to the bus stop, because everybody's always flying down the street as it is when 83 is backed up. And I don't feel my child is safe to be standing in a bus stop while people are speeding through. Sometimes they even take the stop sign. They don't even stop. And there's children sitting there, and, and, when it's raining, they have to stand on the street, because there's no sidewalk. What I see now is there's going to be all these cars coming in and out. I really don't know how Do I have to watch over my child 24/7 to find out who is coming in, who's coming out? I mean, I am very alarmed about the situation that's happening right now, right across my street. I mean, I have an elderly mom. If the ambulance has to come, if it's at 3:00 and people are coming out of the street, how am I going to be able to get out of my property if there's people trying to get home? I mean, even in Wooddale School right now, people try to run you over trying to get home because they want to rush when there's teachers, kids, me walking my child just to my parking lot, and I just wait 10 minutes until everybody is gone. So, now, I'm going to have to deal with that in front of my house. I don't think it's fair. Absolutely not fair. I am afraid that my child will be playing outside. People are rushing out, don't see my child playing ball, or whatever it is, and she's going to get hurt. We don't have sidewalks, and you're making our street smaller. So, we're going to have to do what? Walk on dirt when it's raining, snowing? I mean, it just doesn't feel fair at all, at all. My child's safety is in danger. And in 83—I don't even go through 83. I go through Foster. There's no way I can get off of 83 in the morning. There's no way of getting out of 83 at 3:00. I've been there two years, and I've seen four accidents in the corner of our property, right there in the corner of Bryn Mawr, right into the ditch. They've taken poles down, the signs that're saying no U-turn or whatever. That's all gone, and I've only been there two years. Two years. So, you're going to tell me these 210 cars are going to go through Bryn Mawr out to 83 when it's traffic time? I don't think so. People are always in a hurry to get home, and they don't care what they need to do to get to where their destination is. They do it at the school. I'm sure you guys all got complaints about our principal at the school talking about people running over cones, and that's the school. And we get newsletters every single day, please be safe, you know, la-la-la-la. Do you really think people are going to respect us? No. It's not going to happen. That's all my concerns are. I speak for all the children in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay. I may butcher this name a little bit. Olghierd? Alghierd?
Hi. My name is Olger Tashkevich. I live on 17W 121 Center Street in Mohawk Manor. Aside everything that was said here so far, aside the traffic, which is a huge concern for us, just like the lady said, 210 cars are coming into our neighborhood instead of 60. That's just ridiculous. And yesterday, on my way back home from work, I took the time to drive really slow along Bryn Mawr Avenue where there used to be houses. There is, obviously, signs of heavy equipment driving on all those lawns. Every single well is sitting up. None of them were kept. This is against every code, every building code that exists. Those wells have to be kept before you can start any construction. I don't know. Maybe we should be calling—start calling county EPA and have EPA inspectors swing by and put a stop to this entire project until all those requirements are met. This is a huge concern. They can be poisoning our only water, our only drinking water. And just like that, they decided to drive trucks over this. Please be mindful of this. Thank you.
That is all the cards I have. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak and fill out a card? Otherwise, I am going to continue. Okay. With there being none, report and recommendation. Annexation, special use, planned unit development, rezoning, final plan of subdivision, and major site plan review for the redevelopment of the subject property located at 800 North Route 83. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Okay. I have a second. We're going to let Mr. Cage has a presentation. We'll let him make his presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. I know a number of people have seen this before. It's slightly updated with a few recent updates. Once it—there we go. So, moving straight to it. Obviously, this is the 2019 CDC-11 application for 800 North Route 83 rezoning to I-1 upon annexation, special use permit, planned unit development, final plan of subdivision, and major site plan review. Obviously, this is the location we're talking about right here. Obviously, Elgin-O'Hare, 83, just for orientation. Moving in a little bit closer, this is the kind of 17, I think, .7 acres. Added in the right-of-way for the two streets—I'm sorry—for the—yeah, the two streets. You get closer to 19 acres. Obviously, this is orientated north-south. Once again, Route 83. This is the current zoning map for the city of Wooddale. Obviously, the industrial. Obviously, a lot of our residents here this evening are from this area and along Bryn Mawr right here. Moving on, this is just an excerpt from our comprehensive land use plan from last year. Shows that it's sites likely to experience development pressure, and obviously, here we are. This is a closer and probably gives everybody a better idea of exactly the area that we're talking about and that the residents are talking about. Route 83. Obviously, this is the main intersection for Bryn Mawr. Bryn Mawr is the east-west, terminates right there right now. This is Edgewood, and then the Pine Avenue right-of-way and the Yardmore Avenue right-of-way, which would be vacated if this is approved. Essentially, this is just the survey—the existing survey of the property. Obviously, shows the residences. 30 existing residential houses. There's a couple of lots that don't have houses on them, but 30 residential lots. Obviously, this is just the proposed final plan of subdivision. Essentially, turning it into one lot, 17.7 acres. And then, this is the designated area for the stormwater detention, and I think there's a site plan that's a little bit clearer on that that we'll get to in just a second. Right there. Perfect. So, I know one of the residents mentioned that a plan had—see if I can get this—the traffic study had talked about a right-in, right-out in this location. I believe that was on one of the initial plans that IDOT is not going to permit. Obviously, that would help traffic, no doubt, in this area. Unfortunately, Route 83 is an IDOT street, and that's not something that the city has a say in. Other key things here are—obviously, I know, just kind of jumping ahead, access points. One to the north—to the northwest. I think some—the—a large number of comments were on these three access points here along Bryn Mawr. One, two, three. And obviously, you see the proposed office warehouse, the main office being at the front of the building. The elevations will be coming up, and obviously, the remainder warehouse. These are the building elevations. I think from—you know, what will the building look like from Route 83? This is the front facade on 83. Probably more importantly to a lot of the people here this evening, this is the proposed elevation—sorry, I got the microphone in the way—that would be across the street on Bryn Mawr. This would be the north facade with the loading docks, and obviously, Route 83, and then this would be the—what would be the Edgewood side of the building. This is a landscape plan. I apologize. It's not as clear as it perhaps should be or was on the reduced version. Once again, the rather large detention pond here. Landscaping as prescribed by the code around the parking lot. Probably most importantly for a number of the residents here this evening, more—let's see—more landscaping along the south of the building, kind of from east to west here. And I know that's obviously a sensitive subject. I think we already covered that one. Oh, I apologize. This is just highlighting essentially the access points. Obviously, the sensitive ones down here to the south. Yes?
Just a quick question. The one going onto Edgewood, is that giving them access to Edgewood?
This one up here? That is correct, yes.
And Edgewood, that takes you—you could go through to Thorndale?
That is correct.
Okay. And there is no residential on Edgewood if they go to Thorndale through there, correct?
That is—that is correct. Obviously, you know, truck traffic is a major issue to the residents here this evening. It's a major concern to everyone, I think, probably more so the residents, because those are the comments we heard at the CDC meeting on Monday. I know the applicant talked at the public hearing about access points, but I think, you know, in a perfect world—and I'm not saying we live in a perfect world, but in a perfect world, this is where the truck traffic would go. I will get to these points in just a minute because there are a number of comments that were raised at the CDC that I did make a comment that I would follow through on, and I'll get to those at the end.
Okay. I just had that one question. I wanted to make sure there's no residential.
Yeah. Sorry. Long answer for—I apologize. So, the PUD deviations, that's what I was getting at. So, essentially, the driveways exceed the width, which, just in my opinion, is very restrictive. In the industrial park, typically—I think we've seen it with the last three or four applications of all requested PUD deviations from the driveway width, simply because, you know, you have truck traffic. They can't get in within, you know, a reduced-width driveway. Second deviation being the setback from Bussy Road or Route 83. It's prescribed to be less than that. Obviously, the detention is located along Route 83, therefore pushing the building back, requiring a deviation. And the third—and I know some of this is repetitive, so I won't—I'll try and go quickly through it. The third is the—they're not proposing a dumpster enclosure. They're proposing a trash compactor, which is screened right here. And then, I know these are the professionals who have reviewed the plans, city engineer. Obviously, the site has to function accordingly. They have to keep their stormwater detention on-site. That's why they have the pond. It's been reviewed by the building administrator, Public Works, our city planner, and of course, you know, life safety issue and circulation from the Wooddale Fire District. And then, I think, just kind of—this is what I mentioned earlier. So, the recommended approval at the CDC—the CDC voted to recommend approval five to one because it was consistent with the UDO and the comprehensive plan. And the CDC did bring up some—you know, per the comments from the residents, some additional conditions. And the first two, number one and number two, are kind of standard conditions, conformance with the staff memo, conformance with final engineering. And some of the things that we heard loud and clear at the public hearing, and I think they've been echoed this evening because they are major issues, is the examination of the potential elimination of one of the Bryn Mawr access points. I know this was a kind of a bone of contention. There is a concern with traffic and construction traffic along Bryn Mawr, and it was made known that the third access point, which I think it was the middle one of the three, was a little excessive. So, that was part of the recommendation. The consideration of an additional access point from Edgewood. Obviously, traffic—truck traffic is a major issue in this area. That was another condition that the CDC added. And then, they also mentioned there were a number of concerns from the residents talking about the wells and the water issues out there. I did make the comment that I would follow up with DuPage County. I did today. I formalized a complaint or an issue to look at. I did get a call back from the Health Department, and they will be following up. And, you know, just from a—you know, a personal standpoint, I was out there picking up the public hearing signs, and I did see a car from DuPage County. So, they are aware of the property. They are aware of the project, and we did follow up. So, just very briefly, before I stop talking. So, we had the public hearing on Monday at CDC. We're here at the PZB. This will go—come back to the city council for an annexation public hearing. I think that will give staff enough time to sit down with the applicant to follow up on a number of these issues. And I think certainly—oh, and one other thing, I do apologize—sidewalks. We heard that loud and clear. That safety is an issue. I completely agree. I think any, you know, reconstruction of Bryn Mawr Avenue should include a sidewalk. So, I would add that to the list. I think between now and the annexation public hearing—time's up—is that I'll sit down with the applicant and see if we can address a number of these issues because, obviously, the residents have concerns. These are some of the issues that we can address, and I think when we come back at that annexation public hearing, we'll have an update on a number of these issues. And with that, I'll stop talking. Any questions?
Could you put that drawing back with the building and the access points again, please?
That one?
Yeah. So, I mean, it would appear to me that realistically, the docks are in the back of the building, so realistically, I'm guessing they're probably going to have—most of them go through Edgewood. Otherwise, they're going to have to drive through all those cars in the parking lots. Is that correct?
So, the testimony we got was that the truck traffic would be directed to Edbrook. What we've heard is there are major concerns about trucks entering on Bryn Mawr, construction traffic. I think from our standpoint, that's something that we would sit down with the applicant and work through. And in terms of the current situation—I'm not going to say it because I know it will upset people—if and when this property is annexed, the city has certain codes, construction hours. We expect the applicant will meet those. If there are issues, problems, we—from the city's standpoint—would like to know about it so we can address it.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Yeah. I just want to check through a couple of things here. I made a little list as I was listening to everybody. I think everything will come clear actually when this does get annexed and we can actually take control of it. I'm sure our police department's going to be all over traffic and stuff. But some of the things that I was concerned about, if in fact, the traffic study was done and it was based on a entrance or exit, right-in, right-out for 83, that we look into that. If that needs adjusting or modifying, I don't know, but to put that on the list. And probably one of the biggest things was safety in there, both from a policing standpoint and from a good neighbor standpoint with controlling that construction site. And I know big sites can get out of control, being in the construction business myself, and I think that we need to put some extra things in place to keep control of everybody over there so it doesn't spill out into the neighborhood. When I drove through there over the weekend, as you open up that site, I mean, you are right on top of those houses and across the street on Bryn Mawr, and as—
So the testimony we got was that the truck traffic would be directed to Edbrook. What we've heard is there are major concerns about trucks entering on Bryn Mawr, construction traffic. I think from our standpoint, that's something that we would sit down with the applicant and work through. And in terms of the current situation, I'm not going to say it because I know it will upset people. If and when this property is annexed, the city has certain codes, construction hours. We expect the applicant will meet those. If there are issues, problems, we, from the city's standpoint, would like to know about it so we can address it.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I just want to check through a couple of things here. I made a little list as I was listening to everybody. I think everything will come clearer, actually, when this does get annexed and we can actually take control of it. I'm sure our police department's going to be all over traffic and stuff. But some of the things that I was concerned about, if in fact, the traffic study was done and it was based on a entrance or exit, right-in, right-out for 83, that we look into that. If that needs adjusting or modifying, I don't know. But to put that on the list. And probably one of the biggest things was safety in there, both from a policing standpoint and from a good neighbor standpoint with controlling that construction site. And I know big sites can get out of control, being in the construction business myself. And I think that we need to put some extra things in place to keep control of everybody over there so it doesn't spill out into the neighborhood. When I drove through there over the weekend, as you open up that site, I mean, you are right on top of those houses on across the street on Bryn Mawr. And as everybody's explaining it to me, I'd be asking the same question. My kids are older now, but I'll use my grandkids. How would I walk my grandkids down the street? I didn't know a bus stopped there until somebody here said something. So if that's the case, we, you know, all those things we need to allow for, make some allowances for. If we need to expand an area for people to sit, to put benches or something to indent upon or do something so everybody can cohabit over there till whatever's going to happen, and I don't know what that is, happens. But in interim, we need it to make it so that those people can coexist with that construction site. Thanks.
Any other questions? I believe there is someone, oh.
More comments than questions. I'd like all the residents to realize that this council is with you 100% with this Goliath and David scenario. As Chairman of Public Health and Safety, you could take this to the bank. Nobody's moving anywhere if any child's life is endangered, any senior's life is endangered, or any resident's life is endangered. I don't care how much money's coming or going for this project. So we are with you. And we're not here tonight to say, yeah, ready, go. Because there's a lot of unanswered questions. I've heard questions tonight that I want answers to. Two sets of permits, two sets of reports. I don't get it. And as far as when I looked, Ed, when you put up those professionals, could you put that list of professionals you had up there that were talked with? The only safety that I could see would be with our fire district. And I think that life safety would pertain more for the building, the construction. Doesn't take into consideration the children, the neighborhood, the residents. This is where we need to focus our attention. And I want to be a part of that as Chairman of Safety. Thank you.
Mr. Cage?
Just to respond to that quickly, we've, you know, what's beneficial about these meetings is that we have residents who live in the neighborhood who are more familiar with that area than I am, certainly. And what we heard loud and clear was sidewalks are key. Safety is key. You know, we're talking about children. We're talking about bus stops. You know, to modify the plan, if this, you know, if this goes through and is approved and the street is reconstructed, there's no reason that we can't add a sidewalk into that area. There's no reason, I think Alderman Woods raised an excellent point, there's no reason that we can't add an area for safety for waiting for the bus. I mean, these are things that are important that if, you know, if you live in a neighborhood, you know about it. The residents have brought this to our attention. Now it's, you know, it's on us, staffs. And, you know, you have my commitment. We'll sit down with the developer. We'll work on a number of these issues. And exactly as Alderman Sorrentino mentioned, safety is a key issue. I know for the City Council, it's a key issue for staff. These are things that we can look into and come up with a plan. And we certainly will before it comes back for the annexation public hearing.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, I believe somebody from the development company is here. Do you want to speak at all or no?
Hi. Hear me? Kevin Mahoney with Transwestern Development. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out Monday, coming out tonight. I don't want you to think that what you're saying is falling in deaf ears. I think the community engagement component is important, okay? So I want you to know that we are going to be working with staff going forward to integrate a lot of your comments into what we plan on doing. So don't think that, again, your comments are worthless because we haven't listened. I've got many pages of notes. I'm still icing my bruises from Monday night. But we are listening. There's a few things that I wanted to just readdress and there's been a recurring theme. First one, being a good neighbor. So we started limited tree removal. That certainly has caused a lot of frustration. So what we did, and the work that we've done on the sites has solely been tree removal. We worked with each of the residents in those homes to provide proper notice, to make sure that they were aware. We understand that this is a unique scenario. There's families in these homes, there's kids. So we worked individually with each homeowner so they were aware of what was happening. Clearly, we didn't do a good job south of Bryn Mawr providing that notice. So I apologize for that. That was certainly not intentional. In terms of the well impact, so we did limited tree removal with Home or Tree Service, they're the biggest tree removal company in Chicago, or at least one of the biggest. Our general contractor was onsite for that tree removal every single day. Each lot they went on, we had every well already surveyed. They flagged them to make sure that none of the equipment was damaging the wells. Because certainly, I understand your concerns. That is the last thing we want, is to cause any sort of impact from that work that we're doing. In terms of fencing, security site supervision, you mentioned you had been there recently. It doesn't look great, right? Unfortunately, we're in a transition period right now. Of the 30 homes, there's probably 20 residents still in the homes. So it's a very challenging environment because we've got a lot of folks that have lived there for a while and then the process of moving out. So it probably looks like a war zone and I apologize for that. These folks will be moving out over the next seven to 10 days. The latest that we'll have residents in these homes is November 2nd. So we are already working on plans to fully secure the site once it already vacates. We can't do that now because there's people still in the homes. So we are already talking with fencing companies to set up that site security. We don't, again, want to create an attractive nuisance for anybody. So we will have, it is our goal. The folks are out by Saturday the 2nd. By November 4th, that week, we will be working to secure the site. And in terms of construction traffic, that again, is a recurring theme. We will work with city staff, with our general contractor, to do everything we can to minimize the traffic that runs along Bryn Mawr. We do, Ed, could you go back to the site plan? As we talked about, you know, the Edgewood connection in the northwest is critically important. It's not just when we are hopefully finished with the building. That's going to be a key access point for construction staging. Because that minimizes the impact to anybody along Bryn Mawr. And so that is going to be a focus with our general contractor. Going back to building design, we have designed this building as much as we can to minimize impact to the surrounding area. As you can see, we situated the truck docks to the north. That was intentional because we have that northwest axis along Edgewood. So the intent is trucks coming in there, trucks going out there. Their existing operations, they own the two buildings that are just to the northwest. So their trucks are already going there. So that is the whole purpose of north-facing docks. You're already facing the industrial. Going back to the south half of the building, a lot of comments have been made about fencing. Unfortunately, that landscape plan really doesn't do it justice. We're planting almost 200 trees throughout this entire site. A huge focus of that has been along Bryn Mawr Avenue. I have the landscape plan with me. I'm happy to show you guys after. Right along Bryn Mawr, we've got over 40 large trees. So that's elm, maple, oak. These are substantial trees. That is going to be some pretty substantial screening. We can certainly look into doing some fencing along there. But I believe that the landscaping is going to be an incredible screen. So please stick around after. I'm happy to show you the landscape plan. It's pretty substantial. And then in terms of the curb cuts and access, as Ed mentioned, and I didn't do a good job explaining this on Monday, we tried to get a curb cut along Bryn Mawr, or I'm sorry, along Bussy. Unfortunately, it's an IDOT road. And the constriction for us and for IDOT is that between the industrial building to the north and Bryn Mawr, you've got 700 feet. IDOT requires 500 feet minimum between curb cuts. So it didn't matter where we put that. Even if we put it in the middle, we'd be at 350 feet. It's not good enough for them. So there was no way we were going to get that. Completely agree with you, that would have been ideal. Unfortunately, IDOT does not cooperate with many people other than themselves. So that was the intention with the third auto access point along Bryn Mawr. Clearly, that's become an issue. As Ed noted, we will look into that, absolutely. And then lastly, just a couple clarifying things related to the economic impact. I think it was noted that the 100 jobs are transwestern jobs. They're not transwestern jobs. These are nip-on express jobs. So this is a corporate relocation. Yeah, that's okay. So it'll be 100 or up to 100 jobs relocating. Once these plans are finalized, they may not get everybody to relocate, right? It's a big commitment. And I mentioned this on Monday and I don't think people truly believed what I was saying, but they did share an internal presentation. It was shared with the city as well. It was all about Wooddale and I'm not making that up. And so they really do want their employees to relocate. Now, if they don't, there's no doubt that they're going to hire local. They've been a member of the corporate community for quite some time with their buildings in Edgewood. So they're going to be great corporate members of the community here and continue to be. And then last was, I think there were some comments about business hours. This is not going to be a 24-hour facility. This is normal business hours. So you're not going to have truck traffic in the middle of the night. You know, typical, you know, whatever, six to six or eight to six business hours. I think that was all I had.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Should we take a roll call? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
I'm going to abstain until further reports come my way.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
That passes. Next, final facade improvement grant program for JB Zen located at 146 West Irving Park Road. And the amount not to exceed $8,826.25. That would be my motion.
Snack up.
Okay, any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Items to be considered in future meetings. Recreational marijuana, December 12th. UDO test cover visions, December 12th. Do we have any other? Do we have anything else to add? And thank you all for attending. I appreciate everybody for, everybody, giving everybody a time to talk. There's still more meetings. I mean, there's going to be a public hearing. I'll let our city manager answer that.
There's, all the information would be posted on the website and there is another public meeting on Thursday, November 21st.
Prior to our next committee, I'm going to call a 10-minute adjournment.
Yeah, we didn't adjourn. Yeah, anything else to add to the agenda?
No.
Okay, with that being said, I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Meeting is closed.
Public Health and Safety will be taking a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:45. I have to go to the bathroom.